All right, it's five o'clock, so let's call the recessed agenda April fifteenth to order. Go ahead, James, Department Head reports, whatever you're gonna do with them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and if it's all right, if I may make a quick introduction and also do a roll call so we can establish quorum for the public listening in.
Yeah.
So, for the record, this is the Town of Manio's telephone conference call for the recessed meeting of the Board of Commissioners, April fifteenth, 2020. This is Town Manager James Ayers here at Town Hall. Other town staff members present on the conference call include Town Clerk Becky Bryholtz, Finance Director Shannon Twitty, and IT Department Head Carl Woody. You'll notice that I identified myself when I started speaking so that the Town Clerk can capture what I'm saying for the minutes, and it would be great if all participants on the call could do the same. This meeting is available to the public, and the public will have the opportunity to provide public comment at the appropriate times on the agenda. Also, the meeting is being recorded so that interested parties can hear the meeting should they be unable to attend. Now, in order to establish a quorum, we'll do a roll call to verify members of the Board of Commissioners who are present. Of course, let's start with Mayor Owens.
Here.
Mayor Protem Selby.
Here.
Commissioner Walker.
Present.
Commissioner Collins.
Present.
Commissioner Borland.
I'm here.
Commissioner Mann.
Here.
And Commissioner Burke. Okay, so it looks like we have six of seven members available, and looking at the screen, I believe we have six out of seven, so there is a quorum present, and with the mayor having called the meeting to order, it looks like we're prepared to move forward with the agenda.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Item number two on the agenda, Department Head Reports. So, for the purpose of the public, the Department Head Reports are in writing. We won't read them out here over a conference call. Folks who are interested in seeing the full report are directed to townofmanio.com, and under our Governing tab, they'll actually see agendas, and the full agenda package under the Board of Commissioners is available. In fact, it has not just the agenda, but also every staff report for this meeting. With nothing there for information only, item number three, Public Hearings. Now, these are, right now, these are for information. Now, in order to move forward with this, we are soliciting public comment on this, but public comment could come in by writing, or people on the phone can participate. And what we'll do first, if it's all right with the presiding officer, Mr. Mayor, I will read in anticipation of 3A, which is the Manio Small Business Emergency Fund. I know we have to open these public hearings with a motion, and if it's all right, I will then read the written feedback, and then go to public comment, if that's all right, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Somebody make the motion that we take up the public hearing on the Manio Small Business Emergency Fund.
I'd like to make a motion that we open the public hearing for the Small Business Relief Fund.
And for the record, that was Commissioner Walker?
Yeah, good, okay. Is there a second?
Borland, a second.
All right. The motion's second, that we open the Manio Small Business Emergency Fund public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both? Ayes have it. All right, go ahead, James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, we have a number of attendees on the phone, but before we have the folks on the phone, we did receive two comments in writing regarding this topic. So, first, number one, was feedback from a resident, and the quote is, "I support this so long as it remains a legitimate loan that is paid back. Actually, the town should have had such a fund before this current economic panic. This should be called the Manio Small Business Fund. Remove the emergency verbiage, as we should not have to refer to this as an emergency to justify its creation. Consider it as a micro lending creation that fills many voids currently in place from the large lending institutions prior to the current situation, long overdue," end quote. Feedback number two.
Who was it signed by?
It was signed by a resident.
Didn't give the name?
Oh, no, I have the name, I'm sorry.
You know, when we have public comment, they have to give their name and address.
Yes, sir. Thank you for reminding me of that. That information came in from a resident, Mr. Douglas Backman. And, let's see, we also have a second public comment. Now, this one was part of a list of suggestions that were compiled by community member Beebe Woody, and she received suggestions from folks, and this is what she submitted. It was actually a number of suggestions, and the header for this reads, "Town of Manio Going Forward Suggestions: How Can the Town Help Our Citizens and Businesses Through the Coronavirus?" And then, the section that was relevant to this proposed Small Business Emergency Fund reads, "L loans may create a conflict of interest with other government loan/funding programs. Also, loans have to be paid back, grants do not," end quote. Now, I should note for the record that this feedback arrived prior to the final draft of the program documents, and we incorporated provisions that would eliminate any such conflicts or barriers, such as the use of UCC-1 filings and allowing early payoff without penalty to those businesses who get funding from the SBA or other sources. Now, those were the only two written comments that were received before this public hearing. Now, I'm going to turn to my screen here. Right now, we have fourteen call-in listeners. So, for any call-in listener who desires to comment here at the public hearing, what you do is you raise your hand, and I will, you raise your hand by punching your phone, star six. And when you hit star six, that will raise your hand on the computer screen, and we can unmute you. And what we'll do is we'll identify you by the last digits of your phone number so that you can identify yourself, your location, and make any comment you might make on this public hearing.
Hey, James, this is Jason. Does it make sense to, and sorry to talk over you here, but does it make sense to recap some of the details in terms of where money's coming from or those logistics before people comment on it? Or are you gonna make some of those comments afterwards? I just want to make sure that those additional details are shared to folks who have opinions on it.
Yes, sir, Commissioner, and Mr. Mayor, if it's all right, I'll do my introductory comments on this topic now instead of on the new business item, if that's all right with you, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yes, sir. So, I'll give a short introduction for folks who are out there, and we're actually gonna redo the call for public hearing with a new command. So, in terms of the Manio Small Business Emergency Fund, coronavirus COVID-19 has impacted public health on an immediate scale, and the economic impacts are already being felt locally. Small businesses are particularly hard-hit in the current environment, and these businesses and the jobs they provide make up the backbone of the local economy here in the Town of Manio. North Carolina local governments are authorized to perform economic development activities, and in this case, the offering of emergency loans to small businesses. What we have done is have done a proper public notice, and we are proposing a program after getting information from the University of North Carolina School of Government, the Development Finance Initiative there at UNC, here around the state, and legal counsel.
Thank you, Carl.
We have, what we've done, we've tried to take some of this feedback, and the eligibility parameters would need to be established, and here are the suggested ones. It's a small business, that is, less than fifty employees, including the owner. It must have a physical location within town limits. It must have been in business for at least a year. It must be the primary occupation of the owner, that is, not secondary employment or a gig job. It must have demonstrated impact from COVID-19. Now, we structured it as basically intended to help two types of businesses. Both of them are small businesses, but for those businesses that are going after Small Business Administration, disaster recovery loans, and other types of federal funding, this loan can easily be paid, this can be a bridge loan to them where it takes care of their short-term bills while the paperwork hassles are being worked out with the federal program, and they then can pay those off with the proceeds of those lower-interest loans. On the other hand, we also can structure it, for those people who aren't eligible for those loans or unable to get it, they can utilize this loan and have a long-term repayment program so that they can get through the crisis. So, a maximum amount will be $5,000, using an interest rate of 6% based on feedback we had from schools, government, and council. The example of someone who did it as a long-term loan would be, for example, year one, it would be a deferred payment. Now, interest would still accrue, but it would be zero-dollar a month so they can get through the crisis and get through the season. Year two, they'd be taking an interest-only payment, and in this example, it'd be $26.54 a month. Year three through ten would be principal and interest, $69.76 a month. So, it would be intent, it is a loan, it cannot be a grant per state law, it has to be a loan, and it is to be paid back. There is no penalty for early repayment, so they can participate in another loan program, and there would not be a UCC-1, or we would not, for example, do a UCC-1 filing on their inventory or assets because that would hurt their ability to get other kinds of funding. Also, any owner with a 33% or larger share must sign as a co-borrower because these folks will be signing on loan and be responsible for repayment. We've set this up so that it can be a quick-hit loan. The goal would be that if it's approved here on April fifteenth, we believe we can go through a full application, review, and process so that those checks, should they be eligible, could be cut by the end of the month in time for them to make their May first payment. Eligible expenses would include things like payroll, accounts payable, including town water bills, fixed sets, rent, et cetera. And of course, we can confer with each of these firms because if they may be in their own specific situations, we can provide additional advice and guidance. That's a snapshot of the program itself. Are there questions from the board before we open it up for the public comment part of the hearing?
This is Commissioner Borland again. Did you mention the source of the funds?
Thank you, Commissioner Borland, yes. This is proposed to come from the existing fund balance. So, for the general public, we often liken our fund balance to our rainy day fund, and these are funds that are set aside in case of emergencies, problems, hurricanes, whatever. I can't think of any rainier day than this particular pandemic that has not been experienced in the last few generations. So, in terms of the allocation, we're proposing an allocation of $100,000 to this Manio Small Business Emergency Fund. And as the board may recall from its budget, in general, fund balance is calculated annually. You can't really track it on a going-forward basis, but for comparison purpose, when we started this fiscal year, fiscal year 2019, 2020, our fund balance was $4.184,184,853, which exceeded by three-quarters of a million, the minimum we required. And this particular allocation is just a small percentage of that available fund. And also, we have not gone back to the board for any additional takes from the fund balance during this fiscal year. So, that money, that rainy day fund is available should you choose to make that appropriation in the next phase of this consideration.
This is Commissioner Walker on the same line. So, we can't figure what the percent, I mean, it wouldn't even reduce it by, say, a percent or half percent if we have the four million, and this is 100,000?
Yes, right now, that 100,000 would calculate to around a little over 2% of our fund balance.
Okay.
And that's 2% of fund balance, which of course is only a percentage of our overall budget.
Right. Okay, I just, my math was off, sorry.
Okay.
This is Commissioner Selby. Who will be doing administrative work or reviewing the applications for these loans and keeping up with all that? Will that be done in-house?
Yes, indeed, Commissioner Selby. It would be done in-house. We have seen some larger jurisdictions where they hire a third-party, like a community development foundation, but unfortunately, our local one does not perform that kind of work, so we would do it in-house. Also, that would save money on administrative fees. Lastly, assuming this gets, if this got subscribed with loan granting from $2,500 to $5,000, it would only represent about the 20 to, say, somewhere between 20 and 25 loans would be the expectation, and that is manageable in-house.
Okay. 20 to 25, do we have more business than that? What happens if we go over? I don't even know how many businesses that we have in Manio that, you know, would be eligible.
Yes, and that's great. As we work on our database of businesses, since 2015, since the state eliminated the privilege license, which would allow us to track those, but we believe there are more businesses than we would have available loans, so it's possible it could be oversubscribed. One of the things we did, we mentioned in our staff report, is to try and figure a way to, is to figure a way to prioritize, making sure they not only meet the eligibility requirements, but also the funds are used for business continuity, that is, keeping the doors open, and job preservation, job retention, because every job is precious here, and we want to make sure we give the opportunity for local folks to have local jobs. So, in the event, we believe in the first tranche of money, if it's oversubscribed, then the board can decide whether, you know, make a decision in terms of whether additional funding is needed. But right now, that seemed a prudent amount to appropriate, and that's why the recommendation was for 100,000.
So, it's possible that everybody who applied will not get that loan?
That's correct, and we have seen in other larger jurisdictions where it's oversubscribed. In fact, even at the state level, some of the programs, like the Golden Leaf Foundation, they became oversubscribed with millions of dollars. So, I know we can't really compare the state and federal programs to ours in terms of valuation, but doing what we can seems much better than doing nothing, and this seemed like an appropriate first step. But I would be encouraged to see what happens as we open up, should it be approved and applications are opened up to eligible businesses.
And who did you tell me will be reviewing the application and making the determination?
Right now, that's at staff level, since we don't have a third-party entity doing that, and I'd be leading that effort.
This is Commissioner Burke. I hope y'all can hear me. I have some IT issues evidently. I'm not sure. I have two questions, if y'all don't mind. How are we going to ensure that these loans be paid back? I need to say that.
Absolutely, and thank you, Commissioner Burke. So, in terms of, this is a business loan, and it also has to be signed off, as mentioned earlier, not just by the applicant, but also any owner with a 33% or larger share, they must sign as co-borrowers. In terms of, however, as we saw, some organizations have considered the idea, for example, of attaching inventory or furnishing fixtures and equipment, or things like that. Unfortunately, when I looked at that, what I found was having those kind of attachments or those kind of filings out in the public records would make these same businesses not eligible for other types of either federal or commercial funding, so they wouldn't be able to get the larger money that we're just trying to bridge them to. But there is still an expectation they repay the principal and interest, and that's why for those that end up being not eligible for the bigger funding, having this long-deferred payment, having the payment program set up so it defers during the crisis, goes into someone, gets them back on their feet, and then has a longer-term principal and interest, surely someone can afford, with running a business, can afford $69.76 a month. I mean, that's like a phone bill. And we've heard totally from other jurisdictions, like the city of Fayetteville, where a similar, a revolving loan fund, where it's almost a point of pride for these local businesses because they know they pay this back, that goes back and can help other people. So, we are hopeful that that is the case, but it will be set up with a traditional promissory note, loan agreement, and of course, the owners having to sign on board.
Okay, thank you. I guess the second part of the question is, is anybody else in the county doing this? As far as the other towns, like Duck or Kitty Hawk in that area?
No, sir, and to my knowledge, none of them had it on their agenda when I last checked. Not in Deer County. Other jurisdictions in the state, yes. Deer County, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, hopefully, that is a suitable explanation for in anticipation of hearing public comment. I'm going back over to the attendee list, and I see fifteen attendees here calling in. I'm going to give you updated instructions. So, in our case, in order to raise your hand, if you can hit star nine on your phone, not star six, star nine, and what it will do is it will raise your hand, and we will be able to identify, we'll call you out the last four digits of your phone number, and you can state your name and your location, and make your comments here at this public hearing. We want to hear the voice of the public in the community, and this is an opportunity for folks to speak specifically on the Manio Small Business Emergency Fund. So, Mr. Mayor, I know you can't see people raising.
No, and James, you're in control here, but you're going to get them to give their name and address.
Yes, sir.
I will not listen to nobody that will not give a name.
Yes, sir. I'm looking out, so for a second call here, please hit star nine on your phone. It will raise a hand on our screen here. We've tested it out, star nine, and your hand will be raised. Okay, we have a hand raised, and this has the last four numerals on their phone number of 8834. I'm now going to hit the unmute button, and if you could state your name and your location, we will go ahead, and you are unmuted now. So, it's the phone number ending in 8834. Could identify yourself, your name, and your name and your address, and please feel free to give your comments here to the board.
Hi, this is Susan Henderson. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. My address is 614 Pirate's Way, and I wanted to ask two questions regarding the topic that's being discussed. The first is, since the loan vetting of the applications is being done in-house, what measures are being taken to avoid the appearance of conflict of interest by the people deciding on who gets loans and who doesn't? And then, my second question is, will the companies that end up getting loans, will that list be made public information, or will it not be?
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, as a point of order, I know in general, for either whether it's public comment or public hearing, typically, we don't just have question and answer back and forth, but if you think these are relevant, I can provide an update on these issues.
Well, we can, James, and I'm gonna let you do this for this lady. I think her questions are valid, but we can't set precedent and get started with answering all the questions because it would get us in a bind. You know our precedent before. We don't usually respond, but she asked questions, and from now on, you should ask the person, that we're not going to tell the person, we're not going to be able to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, in this particular case, the reason we had to do it in-house, we did not have an available, they call it CFDI, but it's CDFI, Community Development Finance Initiative. So, we are obliged to do it in-house. But since I'm doing it, and I have already outlined in the staff report the various criteria by which these will be evaluated, and also, the application reflects those values, both the basic eligibility criteria as well as a criteria for preservation of jobs, for the continuity of business, and those related things. We do have those in the staff report. They also, we have a loan application set up where those are laid out, so any firm applying knows that that information is there. Secondly, the list of people, so at the bottom of the loan application that is getting finished now, it has at the bottom, and I actually checked with, I checked with the state, the applications themselves will be a matter of public records, so the name of the people, what they're asking for, et cetera. The only things that the statute says wouldn't be releasable are things like social security numbers, driver's license, copy of their, electronic copy of their signature, only those types of personally identifiable things. But the actual applications are by statute public records, and they will be open for viewing by the public. So, that's another thing that leads to the transparency on this, is the openness of both the application and the rating of those applications that goes to the earlier part of the question.
Okay, thank you. The only other comment I would have would be, just in case of a conflict of interest or an association with a particular business or a friend that owns a business, I would just suggest possibly having some way for the primary to recuse themselves from the decision on the loan application and have a secondary review that particular application. That's my only other comment on this topic, and thank you for taking my call.
Thank you so much for participating.
Okay. Let's see, we have now another hand raised, and this has the last four digits of 7362, that's 7362. And I am going to now unmute, and we'll look for the person to identify herself or himself and address, and here we are, unmuted.
Hello, this is Gina Owens. I live at 603 Sir Walter Raleigh Street. I have two questions, but it isn't about the applications that y'all were talking about. I wanted to ask about the COVID-19 and what the town has in place for getting masks and hand sanitizer to the people of the town, and especially the older people out at Betri. And my other question is about the sidewalks on the south side of Sir Walter Raleigh Street, and has there been any progress on that? And the bumps in the road, I don't know how, what those flower things, those bumps are called.
Great. Let's see, Mr. Mayor, I acknowledge technically, these aren't part of the public hearing, and we can defer, there will be a report at the May meeting regarding the items on Sir Walter Raleigh, ranging from sidewalks to bump outs. So, if we can defer that.
Bump outs?
Yes, yes, ma'am. If we can defer that to the May meeting, because we'll have more feedback from the DOT on those items, as planned for the May meeting. And we can also, we can contact the caller about some of our coordination with Deer County on some of the COVID-19, those kinds of operations, and we can make separate contact on that as well, if that's all right.
Yes. Well, thank you very much, and y'all be safe. Bye now.
Thank you, Gina.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm looking at my screen, and we have fifteen attendees now at our peak. We've had two comments, and I don't see any other hands being raised. So, oh, we got a latecomer here, or I'm sorry, we got two more hands raised. Here we go. The first one coming up, last four digits are 6094. See the hand raised here, so if you could identify yourself and your address, I am about to unmute you.
Hi, this is Kathy Martin. I live at 825 Pirate's Way, and I've lived on Roanoke Island for the last thirty years. I want to say, I think this sounds like a great idea, and if there are more businesses who actually qualify than the amount of money you have available that you consider a week from now, two weeks from now, increasing the amount of money because you have plenty in the unspecified till in the back, whatever, to help out some of these small businesses who are going to be really hurting come this summer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And we have one last hand up. Now, this particular hand has last four digits of 1447, and we can identify and do the location. We are unmuted.
Brendan Strom, 21 Spinnaker, Manio. I'd just like to say, I believe that all small businesses in the entire county are affected by COVID-19, and I just, I don't know how we can possibly select one small business over another to receive this financial aid. I mean, there are business owners that live in Manio, but their businesses might be physically located outside of Manio, even though they come to Manio and. located outside of Manio, even though they come to Manio and service inside. You know, the construction industry folks that cut grass, keep house there, so they would be excluded from this loan, even though their tax money was being used, you know, to support these loans. And, you know, we'd also have to worry about, you know, default, how are we going to handle that? That's definitely a terrible public relations nightmare for the town to have to deal with default from a town business on a loan. You know, the federal government has loans and grants available, a number of them, that are specifically structured to get people through this virus, and I think that the state and the federal government are both better positioned to assist businesses. I'm definitely opposed to the town jumping into this, we're the only town that's even talking about it on the beach. And if the town really has a surplus that they feel like it's necessary to give back to the business owners, then I would suggest the most equitable method would just do a property tax refund. That way, everybody is helped out, and that would be something as a grant, not as a loan that wouldn't have to be paid back. I just, it's not fair to take taxpayer money from one business and give it to another when we're all hurting at this point. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you so much.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. So, as I'm looking at the screen, we still have fifteen attendees, but I don't see any other hands raised. I guess we'll give it one last shot here. And I don't see, I don't see any more, Mr. Mayor. Should-
All right, let's call one time, we're gonna call twice. We'll call once, does anybody else like to be heard that's online, listening to us for public comment? Would anybody else like to be heard for public comment? All right, we're gonna close the public comment period.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And if we could have, from the board, if we could have a motion, second, and vote on, to move the, close the public hearing on the Manio Small Business-
Yeah, can we have a motion? Go ahead.
Just provide a little more feedback that I got as well, and I know in terms of conflict of interest, having a business in town, I did mention that I wouldn't be voting on this. I know the, there's a lot of federal and state stuff out there, and it's, I know it's, the process is frustrating, and I'm living that firsthand. Just to share my own experience, we did get approved on our end for our disaster recovery piece, so that's the first I've heard of anybody moving forward, but that is a sign that things are going to be moving forward. It's also in terms of conflict of interest, I still won't vote on this, but I wouldn't, we wouldn't need it with our business. I did want to say, just for the folks that aren't here, able to speak up, the feedback I received from most folks was appreciative that we're talking about this, and we're trying to figure out ways to support small businesses in our communities, but was largely opposed to it, you know, wanted to see what other ways we could spend money to support all residents, but that was the feedback that I, that I hear, or that I heard, and the folks that I reached out to, and the folks that reached out to me, was, you know, there's all these other funds and things out there from federal and state level, and, you know, is it really worth getting into? So, for better or worse, that was just, that was the feedback I got.
All right, congratulations, Jason, for forgetting yours so early. You're the first one I've heard of been approved, because the rest of them's in negotiation. I do compliment you. You're lucky, and you, thank goodness, I'm glad you did.
Well, that's one of those, I know people haven't gotten them, so, but hopefully it's coming.
Okay. I know a lot of people have gotten them, I'm in business.
This Commissioner Collins, this Commissioner Collins, Jason, are you gonna recuse yourself from voting on this topic?
Yeah, I'm gonna accuse myself from voting on it.
But do we need a motion for that?
Yeah, yeah, he'll have to, yeah, we're gonna take a motion on him recusing himself from the vote. Let's go ahead and do it now, get it over with, how about that? Then he'll stay out of the conversation.
I think we need to-
Mr. Mayor, if I may-
I think we need to, you know, don't we need to exit the public hearing first?
Yes, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, that's what I thought, but go ahead.
I've got a statement on recusal, so when we get to the new business for consideration of either of these two funds, or both of these two funds, as we get to each of those agenda items where action will be taken, I've got a statement here on recusal and how the board can vote for recusing any party that may have a conflict, an actual conflict of interest. So, right now, if we can just close the public hearing and move on-
That's what I was trying to do.
Thank you, sir.
This is Eddie Mann, I'll make a motion to close public hearing for the Small Business Emergency Fund.
All right, there's a motion, close the public hearing for the established Small Business Fund, is there a second?
This is Richie's second.
All right, there's a motion, and a second to the business concerned, I'm naming one and read it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I can't vote, hell. All opposed, ayes have it, motion carries, all right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next up on the agenda, this is item three B, this again is a public hearing. Now, the public hearing is for information purposes, and is, like we did last time, I was asked to give a brief outline of this. So, just like those small businesses, residents have been impacted in various ways by the coronavirus, the COVID-19 pandemic, and they've had economic effects such as job losses, reductions in hours, or additional expenses. These economic conditions may make it difficult for some residents to pay their water, pay their bills, including water and sewer charges. The Board of Commissioners led the public policy discussion with its suspended utility disconnections two weeks before the state's executive order. However, in accordance with the state's executive order, charges for water and sewer service will continue to accrue, and the aggregate amount may be significant once the emergency declaration expires. Now, the Board of Commissioners, at its last meeting, directed staff to explore options for relief for residents on these utility bills, while state law prohibits the waiver or discounting of water charges for individuals out of a utility fund. However, a unit of local government may utilize its general fund for special programs, and the proposal in this case is to establish the Manio Resident Relief Fund, provide a limited block of funding to pay the water and sewer bills of town of Manio residents impacted economically by the current declared emergency. The proposed program, following that feedback and that leadership direction, the eligibility parameters that were suggested included, one, that the resident must reside within town limits, two, the location must be their primary residence, and three, they must have a demonstrated impact from COVID-19. The program is proposed to have a maximum value of five hundred dollars per household, which should yield up to several months of relief, depending on household size. Now, these awards are grants, not loans. Awarded funds will not be paid by check to the applicant, instead, they will be paid directly to the Town of Manio Water and Sewer Funds on behalf of the applicant. This program is proposed to run during this declared emergency period and up to ninety days following expiration of the emergency declaration, and there will be an application process designed to document eligibility with program requirements while maintaining flexibility in how they demonstrate that impact. Now, this particular one also would be funded out of the fund balance. The proposal was for a hundred thousand dollars out of the fund balance for this resident relief program. If there are questions from the board before opening, before moving to open the public hearing, that's fine, or we can certainly provide update as we get to the new business consideration, whatever the will the board is, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Selby. Will the same process be used, same in-house people reviewing the applications, like the small business application?
Yes, yes, Mayor Frottem, Selby, in this particular case, it will be done in-house. When we reached out to the foundation, they actually, they don't do this type of thing unlike some other areas where they handle the administration of that. However, one of the things we want to do with this, first of all, because we suspended disconnection, we have a little bit of time here to finish up any kind of an application, since disconnections are suspended during this emergency. But I, we, what we heard pretty clearly was, we need to have some flexibility in how they demonstrate these impacts, because each family may have, may have had different forms of impact, and we also want to make sure that, you know, it's not just a job loss, like I say, it could be a reduction of hours, or other unanticipated expenses incurred as a result of this pandemic. So, we want to make sure there's some appropriate flexibility there, while still maintaining the limits of each potential award.
So, this money's not really going back out, so it's coming right back to us, but we're just paying it for ourselves, right? This is Commissioner Collins.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Collins. So, since state law prohibits us taking, giving a, like a discount or a direct relief out of the utility fund, they do allow it out of the general fund, but the general fund just has to pay the utility fund, but it's still, it's, what we're trying to avoid in this particular case is not to just send a, you know, a check out there, or whatever, it's much easier to do the transfer on their behalf, and that can be done, that can be done, those funds are separated, and in fact, those funds are, have their, have the audit process, you know, the enterprise fund versus our general fund. So, these are audit actions.
And those funds are going to the water and sewer, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's good.
Go ahead, James.
All right, so in order to open the public hearing, we need a motion, second, and vote to open the public hearing on the proposed Manio Resident Relief Fund.
All right, can we have a, go ahead.
Commissioner Selby, I'm making a motion that we open up the public hearing for the Manio Resident Relief Fund.
All right, is there a second?
Eddie Mann's second.
All right, there's a motion, second, we open up a public hearing, now comments for, I mean, for the resident relief fund. All in favor?
Uh, all right.
Opposed, ayes have it.
All right. So, at this time, in terms of public comment, if it's all right, I will read, I'd like to read into the record the two comments that we've received on the resident relief fund. First is a feedback, this is from a resident, this is from Mr. Doug Backman, who had provided feedback earlier, and the quote is, "If this is proposed to be funded from tax dollars, then I am adamantly opposed. This is beyond a slippery slope. It duplicates existing governmental and private entities tasked with this responsibility and has the potential to confound those existing efforts. Now is not the time to be contemplating additional fees or taxation," end quote. The second feedback was part of that list of suggestions compiled by community member BB Woody. The header reads, "Town of Manio Going Forward: Suggestions How the Town Can Help Our Citizens and Businesses Through the Coronavirus." In this case, the section relevant to the proposed Manio Resident Relief Fund indicates support for, quote, "Relief for Utilities/Fees, Water and Sewer," so it was specific on this particular account. In this case, those are the only two written comments that I received in anticipation of the public hearing. And if it's all right, I can look at the, our attendee list, our attendee list, to see if we have any hands raised. So, to remind our attendees, to raise your hand to comment on the Manio Resident Relief Fund, hit star nine on your phone, and it will raise your hand on our computer. And we do have a hand raised, in this particular case, in this particular case, the last four digits of the phone number are eight, eight, three, four. So, I'm going to unmute, and where our caller can identify and state name and location, we are, we are unmuted.
Right, thank you. Susan Henderson, again, six fourteen Pirate's Way. I just wanted to say that I agree with the proposal to help out the residents with the utility bills. I just wanted to add that if there is a mechanism within the state law to be able to have an appeals process to give them an additional three months of time to pay past the three month time period you're already proposing, and they could appeal for that and get maybe those payments spread out through the end of the year, or something like that, I think that that would be another thing to add, just for those that who may, that may have more profound impact than others, and may have suffered a longer-term job loss as a result of the pandemic and COVID-19. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we have, okay, so, that was our first hand raised, and I am looking at the screen right now, I don't have any other hands raised for this, for the Manio Resident Relief Fund. Oh, we have another, we've got another hand that has, that has just been raised, and this one, the last four, the last four digits are one, four, four, seven, and I will now unmute, so that our caller can identify a name and location and the comment.
Brendan Strom, twenty-one Spinnaker. Everybody has been affected, all families with family members working in the private sector are financially affected by this. So, I don't see how we can possibly select one household over another to receive this financial aid, when we're all affected. The state has programs that are very lenient, and specifically designed for people affected by the virus, to keep money rolling in. Unemployment, all the, everything's been waived, where you have to go look for, look for work, you're getting an extra six hundred dollars a week on top of your regular unemployment pay. It's not counting against the businesses. So, those that are unemployed, it may take some work to get through the system, but they're still gonna, you know, receive unemployment pay. They've increased the WIC program, you know, and they've also opened up the Medicaid program to people that are affected, even short-term, by this. So, you know, taking one neighbor's tax money to pay another's water bill when we're all affected, I'm opposed to this strongly. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Brendan.
Okay. Let's see, we have another hand raised, and these, the last four, the last four digits are four, five, nine, seven. Four, five, oops, four, five, nine, seven, and we are now unmuted.
Hello, Doug Backman on Lindsay Lane, I just want to reiterate on prior commentary, I agree with the previous comments in that the federal government has just passed a two trillion-plus aid package. It includes unemployment benefits that are, in many cases, will allow you to draw more pay than you would if you were working. So, if you agree, if you think you're going to do this, and you end up doing it, I certainly hope that you're responsible enough to means test this, because the benefits that are pouring from the feds are extremely generous, and I just don't, I don't understand why we're doing this, and if you want to be equitable about this, in terms of water and sewer, you should just go ahead and waive water and sewer fees for the entire town, for everyone who's currently paying, until the COVID situation is over, or your money runs out. But it's, I just don't think that the town needs to involve itself in this type of wealth throw program, and there are so many other benefits available, and I just want to reiterate the previous comment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hey, let's see, those were the only three hands that were raised so far, so if we have any new callers on the line, again, hit star nine to raise your hand, and we can unmute you, and so far, I don't see any new hands up. Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to do our three calls-
Yeah, we, okay, well, now's the time to be heard for public comment. Is anyone else like to be heard? Would anybody else like to be heard? All right, we'll close public comment period, James.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, as we go out of, go out of the, this public hearing, we'll have a, we'll look for a motion, a second, and a vote to exit the public hearing.
All right, can we have a motion to exit public hearing?
This is Eddie Mann, I make the motion to exit public-
This is Eddie Mann, I make the motion to exit public hearing for the resident relief fund.
All right, can we have a second?
Hold on a second.
All right, uh, the motion is second, close the resident relief fund. All in favor?
Uh, yes.
Opposed, eyes have it. All right, we're now in public, we're in regular session, James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number four on the agenda, this is public comment. Um, I, I know we've received a lot of public comments, I know those are specific to public hearing, but this item is for information. I'll, I'll read out the, the, the normal instructions and, um, the, the members of the public are invited to address the board of commissioners on any topic. Public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions or to take any action on items brought up during the public comment period. Speakers will address all the comments of the board as a whole and not one individual commissioner. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Time limits are three minutes per person or five minutes per group. Please identify yourself and your location so that your statements can be recorded. So in this particular case, we don't need a motion to go into public comment. So I'll look up on the screen and see if any of our callers have, will raise their hand. Callers wanting to public comment on general topics, uh, hit star nine and we, and you'll be recognized. Seeing none, um, uh, there we go, we've got it, we've got a hand raised here and this is public comment. This will identify as first by the last four digits as four, six, four, zero, and it's unmuted. Yes, caller, you're, you're unmuted now and if you don't mind identifying yourself and your location and, uh, go ahead with your public comments. For the caller with last four digits on your phone number of four, six, four, zero, your hand is raised. If you'd like to go ahead and identify yourself, that'd be great. All right, uh, um, caller is, uh, four, four digits of your phone number are four, six, four, zero, your hand's raised. Uh, if you'd like to go ahead and speak, that would be great. Um, some phones have a function where it actually mutes, it actually, you may have to turn off your own mute. Uh, I've seen that happen with certain, certain phones as well, so, but on our phone call right now, you're unmuted and available to talk.
Thanks, James, that was the case. My name's Tim Teepel, I live at one oh one Fernando Street. And my topic is about the bump outs on Sir Walter Street, uh, that was discussed about last meeting. Um, I was wondering if, um, just to be clear, um, those bump outs will be put in for the twenty year plan? And it's both under the traffic and transportation about restructuring Sir Walter Riley Street on the West Main Highway and building sidewalks and installing plantings and lightings along the north side of the street. Not only is it mentioned on the traffic, um, part of the twenty year plan, which DOT had to approve as well, but it is also located on the village aspect as well, on page forty-six of your twenty year plan, for the village neighborhoods and improvements, where it says maintain and improve all roads and adding sidewalks and vegetation to the area and routes on the west side of Sir Walter as well. I would ask that since we are having a twenty year plan update board that is working hard on their information, that, that does get put in consideration when the board makes an opinion or changes the road and the bump outs of Sir Walter. And with that, I appreciate you, the public comment, and I hope everybody's staying safe as well.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Tim.
All right. Um, I'm looking on my screen here and, um, that was the only hand that we had raised here. Uh, is, oh, we have a second hand raised and we have the last four digits on this phone number are eight, eight, three, four. And I'm gonna go ahead and unmute caller eight, eight, three, four.
Um, hello, Susan Henderson, six, fourteen Pirates Way. Um, I want to just, um, first off, thank, um, everyone, uh, the mayor, the board, uh, everyone involved in this hearing. It's been very informative and I appreciate the format, uh, which is very unlike, uh, some of the others I've been in, um, in other jurisdictions, uh, just to see how it goes. This is my first one for Mantio Government. Um, if so, I just wanted to give you a compliment as to how you're running it. Uh, that, that's number one. Number two, um, I just wanted to comment on the, um, uh, the non-resident homeowner, uh, denial of entry, uh, through dare into Mantio. And I would, um, although understanding the steps that, um, have been taken to protect residents and the pandemic and understand all of that, I would also implore, uh, the Mantio Government officials to please also represent the tax paying non-residents, um, who also contribute to the economy, pay taxes. Um, and the fact that there's no, uh, published exception or appeal process to the non-resident ban, um, is very unfair. And some may say because of the pandemic, it doesn't have to be fair, but I think we all still live in the USA and we need to recognize that everybody has certain rights and privileges based on where they live and taxes that they pay. And I would appreciate, uh, representation for all classes of homeownership in Mantio. And, uh, that's my, my final part of the comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
All right. So we had two public co, two public comments here. I'm looking for any other raised hands and, um, right now, I'm not seeing any. So any last comments, star nine? Okay.
All right.
Not seeing any other raised hands, sir.
All right, we'll ask one more time about closing public comment, any other comments? Any other comments? All right, James, we'll close the public comment period.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next up on the agenda, item number, item number five, this is new business. Items five A and five B are for action. However, before we get to these action items, I'd like to read, read a brief statement about recus, about recusal, should it be necessary for either five A or five B. Uh, according to the School of Gov, North Carolina School of Government, quote, "State law creates an affirmative duty for local governing board members to vote on matters that come before the board," end quote. However, in the event of a conflict of interest, the North Carolina General Statute indicate a member, quote, "May be excused from voting," end quote, "on such matters. Absent any direction from the state, it would be prudent to have the board member request a recusal and the board should vote to confirm their will as to whether the member may be excused from voting. If the board desires to excuse the member, then that member will not be allowed to participate in the discussions of the matter nor vote on the matter. Should you decide to proceed with allowing the recusal, then a motion, second and vote would be needed at this time." Um, so as we participate, go to item, item five, new business, those two items are consideration of the Manio Small Business Emergency Fund and the other will be the establishment of the Manio Resident Relief Fund.
All right, I, I have a question for Jason. Uh, Jason, how about, uh, on a new business B, uh, Manio Relief Fund, as far as the, you know, water situation, how about that? You want to be involved or not?
Yeah, I mean, I, I...
I think you can, I don't know why not.
I, yeah, I mean, I've got no more conflict of interest than, than anyone who lives in, in...
That's right, yeah.
So, uh, I would only...
James, can we do that?
Yes, sir. In fact, um, you, you could, the, the board can, as we go to each agenda item, can just say, so if...
Okay, okay, yeah.
Small business, see if anybody needs recuse for that one. Then we'll ask the same question at five B on the resident, you know, utility relief fund.
Okay.
So I guess the question is, is there anybody?
Uh, I, I got, I got a problem here. Uh, we got five and six. With this situation, I'm gonna ask that six be moved ahead of five because if we're gonna, uh, have the new business discussions and a vote, uh, we need to comment, we need opportunity to comment before we have the vote, I think. But what do you, what's the procedure on that, James?
Um, if, yeah, if it's related to the agenda item, it would be great to have it during, during the agenda item. The, the only problem, the only issue I see is that, um, once a person is rec, you know, is recused, they, they...
Oh, okay, yeah, I forgot about recusal. I just want everybody to have a chance to be heard, uh, during, before they vote.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, ab, absolutely. And I, I don't know for sure whether we have anybody who want recusal, but I guess now would be the time for someone to, um, to specify should they choose.
Let's go ahead and do that.
I'd like to request, uh, recusal on item five A.
Okay, uh...
So for the record, Commissioner Borland has requested the recusal from the consideration of the Small Business Emergency Fund. And if it's all right with you, Mr. Mayor, if we may ask the board to, uh, uh, the board outside of Commissioner Borland to, uh, motion second and vote as to whether to recuse him from the voting?
Can we have, uh, can we have a motion to excuse, uh, Commissioner Borland from, uh, item five A?
This is Eddie Mann and I'll, uh, make the motion, recuse Commissioner Borland from five A.
All right, is your second?
Betty Shelby, second.
Okay, the motion is second to, uh, accede to, uh, Commissioner Borland's request to be excused from, uh, new business five A. Uh, all in favor?
Uh, all right.
Opposed, eyes have it. Uh, Mr. Borland is excused from, uh, five A. Go ahead, James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So under five A for the public, this is consideration of establishment of the Manio Small Business Emergency Fund and budget appropriate. If the board, if the board chooses, we, we've already had the staff report on this, but let me be clear on what, what would have to, what would have to happen. So the Manio Small Business Emergency Fund, the program itself has been outlined along with eligibility criteria. It has been properly noticed in accordance with, with state law in term, on the economic development, in accordance with, uh, the General, North Carolina General Statute one fifty-eight dash seven dot one. Um, should, should the board can, should the board can, uh, can decide to, um, to approve this, they would not only have, they would have to do a two part, two motions. One would be to approve the budget amendment that would appropriate the funds from fund balance in the general fund. And then all, after the appropriation, then to authorize the town manager to implement the fund. However, um, the, should the board, uh, should the board not decide to move forward with this, there's, you know, there's no motion or second required. There would only be required should the board decide to, a motion, second and vote. Um, should, should the board not move, decide not to move forward, then that wouldn't be necessary. And Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you, should you, uh...
All right, we're gonna open it up, the discussion, uh, who wants to start it off for five A?
This is Richie, I'll start it off. I'll be the bad guy. All right, I really don't think the town needs to be in, in the banking business. This is how I see it. And there's really no means to recoup the money that we are going to invest in small, which I, you know, I am all for it, so it's small business in Manio. But I don't think we need to be in the banking business or lending money to the small businesses without a really, uh, getting the money back. It's, as, if, if you do put it that way. Maybe I'm just thinking of, of a, of a block, I'm not sure.
No, no. Anyone else?
Um, this is Christine Walker. Um, I don't know about the banking business, but I feel like it is an investment in the town, if you want to put it that way, by helping the businesses stay in town, if that is like an investment. Um, and this is not a, this is not a forgivable loan. I mean, this clearly is meant to be paid back. It's, you know, I mean, it's five thousand dollars, doesn't seem a lot to me. Um, you know, if it means someone going under and being here in the next month or two when things open back up, hopefully. Um, you know, I've not had anyone approach me. Well, I ha, I have had one person, um, that said they were not in favor of it. Um, but other than that, I've not heard, uh, of any, you know, any other besides the comments today. Um, you know, so I, I'm, I'm really either, either way. I mean, I would love to have it available, you know, for those businesses. I mean, we already had one that were struggling and it, and it sounds like James has really, and the staff has really gone, you know, over and above to, you know, for the qualifications and the application. It, to me, it sounds, you know, pretty firm and, and, and strong, um, as far as, you know, repaying. And I realize that there are other, uh, you know, grants and loans available and, you know, that this might just be a bridge loan until they get a loan and then they could pay it back. So I, you know, I can see both sides. Um, so it's, it's whatever the, you know, the rest of the board decides. Um, but I would love to be able to help the ones, again, that, you know, have shown that they've been in business. Um, they're just looking for, you know, a small amount to get, you know, to hold, you know, to keep them in there until they can get doing business again. That's just my thoughts on it.
Okay, Christine, good. Uh, James?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I don't have a vote, I realize that. Am I, uh, should I comment if I'd like to or not?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, as chief local elected official, absolutely, sir.
All right, I'd like to put in my two cents. Uh, this is an admirable thought from James and his staff. Uh, and I can see where it's coming from, but I had to honestly say, I agree with Richie and I'm not putting Richie in the bond. I was gonna say it suggested anyhow that I would be opposed to it, cause it's gonna be a lot of avenues available out there for the small business. And it's sort of the better naturally, but, uh, I just don't think we're the loaning and banking business, really. And, uh, it's admirable and I would not be against it, as Christine said, I'll go either way. But I prefer we not participate. Now, I would suggest that rather than establish a small business emergency fund, that we put money in a tourist bureau fund, not tourist bureau, that we set up, we, we just appointed a PIO officer that she and James and our staff could put together a tourist package for Manio, get the people tried, ready to come back in here when we open up. I think the money would be much better spent in a total package for tourism for Manio and just for Manio. And maybe even around Oak Island, I don't know. But establish a fund that we could set up and, uh, get people coming back to our area as soon as possible, cause everybody is hurting, there's not one single person, everybody's hurting. Uh, so that's my two cent. I, I, I'd be opposed to it. Uh, go ahead, anyone else? If I have a vote, go ahead.
This is, uh, Eddie Mann, if I, if you don't mind me commenting. I, uh, I, I'll be honest with the board, my opinion has evolved in the past week. Um, I initially thought, you know, it's a great idea and I do think it's a great idea, it's a, it's an admirable idea, uh, to help businesses, but I, I do think it would be unfair for me to tell my neighbors that I'm gonna take their tax money and give it to a, a business, um, taking away from them to give to someone else, basically. So I, my opinion has evolved on it. Um, I do think that it would be better suited to help all businesses with that same amount of money instead of giving, uh, one business some money and maybe the other person doesn't even qualify for it or maybe somebody else is paying for it. But if we could take that, that same chunk of money, that one hundred thousand dollars and, uh, put into some kind of revolving fund, uh, like you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, to, to get people here when the town opens back up. Um, I think we should, we should throw down the gauntlet and really, really campaign hard to get visitors to come back to Manio. Um, and not just this summer, at the end of the summer, whenever it opens back up, but, but every summer from here on out, we want people here visiting and spending their money.
All right, um, anyone else?
Yes, this is, um, Betty Shelby. I thought about this a long time and I have purposely contacted, uh, five businesses to get their feedback, get their opinion. And out of the five businesses I contacted, only one was partially in favor of this loan. Um, I would say that you can build a community, a person, a business up by offering a loan or grant. But if it's not repaid, you can tear the relationship down too, you know. People intend to pay loans back and I'm certainly know that they, it's in good effort that they do. But how do you decide who gets it? I, I mean, I know it's a process involved in, um, applying for it and reviewing the application, but I'm certainly concerned about who get it and I'm more concerned who, about who don't get it. So I would not be in favor... So I would not be in favor of the loan at this time. However, I wish we'd take the money or take the time maybe to look at some local small business, um, what they got as COA, and maybe we can talk with them and get our small businesses some help as far as applying for the loan, what to do and what not to do. I think they need, the businesses need some support, that avenue, getting their loan process, getting the application done and get some assistance, maybe through COA with that.
Okay, thank you, Betty. Is there anyone else?
This is Commissioner Collins. Uh, small business in the town of Manio already has it very hard. Um, and I would, you know, if you go to the western part of the state and like Plymouth and, and Wemiston, most of those places are really, the towns are really closed down, the business not, not as, not as open as. Uh, I would hate for us to have a situation like that in the town of Manio where the businesses all close up because of this pandemic, uh, when you already had a hard time surviving. So I, I support this and I'll work for this, uh. And I think James did a real good job in preparing us, uh, with all the details on it.
All right.
If I can, if I can throw one thing in, I'd, I'd, it's not because of, um, James and his staff not doing the work. They put the work in into it, they laid it out for us as detailed as possible. But as an elected official, I gotta put my work in for the people and businesses as well.
Okay. Uh, is there anyone else? Like be heard.
This is Commissioner, hello, this is Commissioner Walker. Um, can I ask James maybe how many, um, if he's had, um, businesses, you know, call into the town specifically for, for this type of help?
Sure.
I mean, how?
Uh, yeah, yes, Commissioner Walker. So we, right now, what I, what I was hearing from the bit, the, the bit, well, the few businesses that I could, we could talk to now in the current environment, um, we were, we were hearing a general desire to see what help they could get from the town. However, um, I believe that what I was, what I was also hearing is there was some question as to would this pro- would this program even be offered? Because, um, I, I think it was alluded to earlier, nobody else in Dare County is doing it. Uh, it's being, it's being either put together or already offered in other parts of the state, but not here locally. So I think there was some question as to whether this program would even get off the ground. Um, but the feedback I did hear is if it did get off the ground, it was important that, um, we, that the loan be structured in such a way that if they got the SBA financing, um, that they, that this could then be paid off, it wouldn't have, you know, like it wouldn't collateralize their real estate or anything like that. It needed to be, it needed to be set up so there could just be, be a bridge loan, um, as, as was mentioned earlier. Um, I have heard from some businesses who've expressed their, um, inability to get the SBA financing despite having existing lending relationships and it's still waiting. Uh, my own brother has, had, had existing relationships and multiple restaurants and continues to, his system crashed on him three times and now they're just waiting in the queue. But I was highly encouraged, uh, that Commissioner Borland reported today that his paperwork has been approved and presumably they're in the process of cutting a check. So I am deeply encouraged by that, which, um, um, that's, that's, that's the first bit of good news I've heard on that front, uh, in, in the, in the last week.
All right, was anybody else buy, does that satisfy Christine?
Yeah, I mean, I just, you know, my initial thought was that there probably would not be, um, that would apply. Uh, and I'm just wondering, you know, after going, you know, if, if it is, you know, like you say, indeed worth it, um, to do it, um, but, um, just, you know, i- if it's something that we could address. I mean, I'm just curious to know, like, if there's gonna be one businesses or if there's gonna be two. Um, you know, and I just, I do, I want to help the ones that need help. Again, it's not, we're not talking a large figure, um, and I just, you know, again, it's not, this is not free money. It, it, this is a loan. I mean, there will, there's gonna be interest charged. So I just, um, I don't know, I'm, I'm hating it, I'm just hating it for the businesses right now. I just, you know, I want to be able to help if we can and, you know, but I, but I am, you know, curious as to how many would actually apply. And I know there's no way of knowing that, but that's just, you know, like I said, if, I, I wish that we could fulfill. I mean, I, I just want to be able to help them if, if we can at all.
All right.
This, this is Commissioner Collins, uh, from the, the limited number of comments that we had on, on this, uh, topic. Uh, most of the people who commented are, uh, agree that this is a good idea. And we should get all the.
Now, I don't, I don't agree with you, Darrell. I've had five people against personally talking to me. So I don't know who's talked to who.
Call in, the people who commented.
Oh, yeah, 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 I agree with you on that.
Okay.
All right, we have the four considerations established of the Manio Small Business Emergency Fund. I'm gonna call for a, am I, am I in good shape, James? Call for a motion?
Hold on, I got one question, wait a minute, can I?
All right, go ahead, go ahead, yeah.
So, so, so James, is no other relief as far as utilities or, or taxes or anything like that? I think, um, caller did mention that. Is there any other relief, like I said, to utilities or taxes or anything like that?
Ye- yes, uh, thank you, Mayor, for telling me, so, um, let me, let me break that down into two parts. So, um, utilities versus taxes. So in terms of utilities, um, it, in ter- in terms of utilities, what we, what, item five B on the agenda talks about, um, utility relief for residents. It does not talk about utility relief for, for businesses.
I know, I know.
However, what I, what I can say is that the board has already authorized, al- already authorized us to do, um, payment plans. When, once we get out of this emergency, they've authorized us to do payment plans for both businesses and residents. So if we get to that situation where a business is having a hard time paying its water bill, uh, and we can demonstrate the impact from COVID nineteen, we have the ability to stretch that out as some payment. So, um, so on the utility side, I think we have a path forward for folks on those, those, those utility bills. Um, the second half though, in terms of tax relief, uh, I conferred with the state, conferred with council. We, we don't ha- I, I conferred with the county, uh, honestly, I was the first person I called. And, uh, we don't have the ability to offer tax relief or tax rebate or deferral or anything like that. There's no statutory authority for us to make that kind of a, make that ki- make that kind of a, of a thing, whether for residents, businesses, or any, any individual or, or class of, of individuals. So utility, yes.
Okay, okay. That, that to the yield is utility. So what you're saying is you can stretch it out, which is gonna add to the, um, the bill, but you can't give any discount or relief. Is that yes or no?
Um, the, uh, 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 in, and we're talking, we're talking about businesses still?
Yeah, we start telling how businesses just.
Yeah, we're still on the business situation now.
Yes, yes, okay, I just wanted to make sure. On, on, on the business, on the business side, right now, there's, we, on, from the enterprise, from the utility fund, we can't give anybody a discharge or, 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 or waive their fee or anything like that. But from the general fund, if we set up, like with the resident fund, if we set up, like with, we're, the five B would propose a fund to help residents that have been impacted. Um, you know, certainly the board can send that to business relief as well. Um, but, um, that wasn't what I heard from the day, uh, from two weeks ago, but that's, that's the will of the board. Um, the one thing that I, I know that we already have the, the ability to do is that, that extended payment plan. And we'll make sure to, um, to work with any businesses in that situation as well as, uh, any resident in that situation.
So I'm assuming it's not a yes or no, I think so.
Yes, in terms of payment plans, absolutely yes. Um, if you, but if we, if you go to the grant side, it would have to be structured like five B where there's an appropriation out of, out of, out of general fund, out of fund balance, and there's a process by which, um, by which.
But now, we're just discussing five A. Now, you're jumping over to five B all the time, James.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm sorry, it was, it, the que- the, the question was a- addressing the, the utility, so that's why I was trying.
That's right, that, yeah.
So in, if, i- in terms of five, in terms of five A, the funds from the loans could have been used for utilities or rent or, or pay, or payroll, especially keeping people paid, that's so important. Um, but if it doesn't get passed, we can move on to the utility issue, um, if this, if, if that's, if that's appropriate.
Anything else, Betty? Betty, I think he's trying to answer your question and I believe it's, it's gonna be, I, I think he's telling you he's, there's room for, uh,
Well, well, I mean.
Relief to the utilities, maybe, what are you saying, James? Go through it again.
The other thing I wanna know, Mayor, if I'm, if you, Mayor and to James, I just asked a question that I thought was, uh, yes or no. I haven't gotten that and that's fine, 'cause evidently, you know, maybe we can. And if, the question is, is there any other, any relief for utilities, for business? Maybe for that water bill, i- is that a yes possible or no?
James?
I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about giving them eighteen months to pay it, extending the payment. I'm not talking about that. I just want yes possible or no, or we can't do it, that's, that's all.
Oh, ye- yes, and, yes, and we would ha- we could do it just like five B for residents. You could choose to direct us to do the same thing for businesses, a similar fund, and we would be happy to bring that back to you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate the clarification, that was super helpful to me.
Uh, all right, going back, we'll, you know, that consideration establishes Manio Small Business Emergency Fund. We'll, uh, will somebody make a motion? Oh, wait a minute, let me see how we're gonna do this now.
Y- yes, Mr. Mayor.
All in, all in, uh, uh, we, we, call for a motion of establishment of Small Business Emergency Fund. Is that right, James? I'm close.
Y- yes, sir, and, and, and if, if a motion is made.
I just want, they're pretty accurate on this.
Yes, sir, if, if they choose to make a motion, they would first do, do a motion to approve the budgetment for appropriation. However, if no motion is made, it dies for lack of motion, or the motion dies for lack of second.
All right, we'll call for the motion, all in favor of the Small Business Emergency Fund, say aye, raise your hand.
Uh, this is Commissioner Collins. I, I'll make the motion to approve the budget amendment to appropriate a hundred thousand dollars for the fund balance in the general fund to establish the Manio Small Business Emergency Fund for the purpose of economic development.
All right, there's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right.
This is Commissioner.
All right, there's been a motion and a second to establishment of Manio Small Business Emergency Fund. All in favor, say aye, raise your hand, so James can get the report.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, unfortunately, my computer won't show the hand raised from the panel. So if it's all right, I'll, I can, we can do a roll call so the town.
Okay, that's good, that's even better.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so we'll, we'll go ahead and, um, and do, and do the roll call. We'll, um, we'll work our way, uh, from, uh, so Commissioner Walker, um, your, your vote on the motion as it, as it stands?
Yes, I seconded the motion, so I am in favor.
Okay, Commissioner Walker is an aye. Commissioner Borland?
It, it changes itself.
Oh, I'm, uh, thank you, oh, thank you so much. Commissioner Borland, thank you for not responding. Uh, you were, you, uh, Commissioner Burke?
Nay.
Commissioner Burke is a nay. Commissioner Mann?
Nay.
Commissioner Collins?
I'm for it.
Aye. Uh, Mayor Protona Selby?
Nay.
Okay, so we have, uh, so it's three to, three to two, um, it's not a split vote, so the mayor doesn't need to vote to break a tie since there's not a tie. So the, um, the motion, uh, the motion, the motion fails, um, and, um, and, and as a point of order, Mr. Mayor, because, because the appropriate, because the establishment of the, of the funding, uh, is, 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 is not successfully met the vote, then it, it appears unnecessary to have any kind of a motion on the authorizing the implementation of it since there's no appropriation.
Okay. All right, the, the vote was, what, three to two, Ja- uh?
Yes, sir.
Three to two, uh, against the, uh, uh, five A consideration established in Manio Small Business, uh, Emergency Fund. Uh, the motion is defeated.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So item five B on the agenda, this is new, new business, this is consideration of the establishment of the Manio Resident Relief Fund and budget appropriation. Prior to, uh, prior to, um, working through this agenda item, we would probably want to go ahead and call for any, anybody who chooses to recuse themselves from this should, um, should speak now and that the board can go through the same process.
All right, is there anyone who would like to be recused from five B consideration established Manio Resident Relief Fund?
This is Commissioner Walker. I would, um, like to recuse myself. I am presently out of work.
Well, that, that's her request, uh, uh, go ahead, James.
Please forgive me, Mr. Mayor. We, I know we're going through the recusal for five B, but in a, uh, a point of order has been brought to my attention. Um, we have, Commissioner Borland was, was excused from participating in five A. But now that we've moved on, um, from five A to five B, if, if you don't mind, may we have the board vote to, um, bring him back into the session?
Oh, yeah, okay. Um.
Sorry about that.
Can we have a motion, uh, we have a need for Commissioner Borland to, uh, establish his voting, uh, requirement on Mania Resort Relief Fund, all in favor?
I made the motion.
Yeah, okay, is there a second?
Okay.
Eddie Mann, second.
All right, motion seconded, uh, Commissioner Borland be, uh, considered eligible to vote on, uh, item five B. All in favor?
Aye.
Wait, did he, did he, elected?
Oh, wait a minute.
Yep, we're, we're just bringing him out of being recused from, being recused so that he can come back in, in time for five B.
Okay.
And so I, I think the, as the mayor, as the mayor, uh, mayor's calling a vote for this after the vote.
Yeah, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
Okay.
All right, we have consideration five B, uh, Mr. Walker, go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Somebody wanted to say something. I thought somebody broke in.
This, this is Commissioner Collins. Can I, uh, make a motion to recuse, uh, Commissioner Walker from item B, uh, five B?
All right, there's a second.
This is Richie's second.
All right, there's a motion second that we excuse, uh, Commissioner Walker from consideration of voting on five B. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed, ayes have it. Uh, Ms. Walker is excused from voting.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, James?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So item five B is the consideration of the Manio Resident Relief Fund and the budget appropriation. Um, it, this is, in this case, it is a, we have this, the, the board has had general discussion and public hearing, um, in accordance with the protocol. Um, at this point, this one would also require two separate motions in order to proceed. Um, the first one would need to actually approve a budget appropriation. Uh, the original, the original discussion was to have an appropriation of a hundred thousand dollars from the fund balance. Um, and that would have been part of the proposed budget amendment number two. However, given that the, given that the Manio Small Business Emergency Fund, uh, did not, did not pass, uh, anybody who chooses to make this motion on the resident relief fund, should it get a motion, um, would need to modify the motion to say, uh, approving budget amendment number two, modified only to appropriate a hundred thousand dollars for the utility, the resident relief fund. modified only to appropriate a hundred thousand dollars for the utility, the Resident Relief Fund.
Alright. Alright, let's open it up for discussion. Oh, we gotta have the, what, the, have we gotta have the motion first, James?
If, if, yeah, if, if you'd like having the motion seconded and opening the discussion is, would be great, if that's, if that's the choice of the board.
Uh, yeah, that's alright, if the board don't object to it. Uh, wait a minute, I'm still confused, if, why approve, why approve this budget if it, if it gets voted down?
Yeah, and that, that, that in fact would tell us whether the board wants to do it or not, so-
But then, then you have the motion to vote on it before you, then you make another one for appropriation, don't you, or not?
I- in our case, we just had the appropriation first, but you're right, if you want to authorize the implementation of it-
Well, there's no bit, no point in raising the money unless it passes.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, absolutely, we can do it in that order, that makes, that makes good sense.
Alright, let's have discussion on consideration of, uh, the Manio Resident Relief Fund. Open it up, go ahead, someone started off, on five B.
This is Eddie Mann, uh, James, ready, you can research this, while other people talk, but, uh, I'd like to know what the total, uh, monthly utility bills for sewer, sewer and water are, um, for the entire town, residents, businesses, everybody, what, what the town takes in monthly.
Alright, great, we'll, we'll get on that while the conversation continues, thank, thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. Uh, anyone else?
Uh, possibly, how many, how many residents would fall on this residence relief? Um-
Is this Betty?
Yes, this is Betty.
Okay.
How many residents are we talking? And is it a number, I mean, I guess until the hundred thousand is gone, right?
Um, yes, yes, Mayor, I'll, um, I'll address, um, Mayor Potem Selby's question. Um, we, we are working on Commissioner Mann's question, uh, the, the finance director's working on that. Uh, in terms of the number of residents, while the, an exact number can't be given, I can, I can, we can work back through some of the logic. So, in the staff report, it talked about a maximum allowance of five hundred per household, and the, the, that was, there were a number of ways to calculate this, but an example that was given was, uh, family of, a family of four, um, and we were seeing, we were seeing values out there of between a hundred and a hundred and twenty-five dollars per month. So, we felt that would get households of varying size, several months, to at least get through the, get through the crisis. Now, if, if all applicants got the maximum value, that would allow up to two hundred households, uh, to get that relief. If some people didn't, needed less than that, of course, then the number of households would go up. But that would be, that would be a min- at least a minimum number of households, two hundred households out of the town.
Are you answering, uh, Eddie, uh, Eddie's question right now, James?
I, I was answering, uh, uh, Mayor Potem Selby's question, uh, in, in terms of the number of households that would be, that could be served by this, and we're working on, and the finance director's working on Commissioner Mann's question about the total sewer and water per month.
Alright.
Thank you.
Um, I guess we could continue discussion till they have that question answered, 'cause I don't know how long it's gonna take.
I guess, this is Richie, I guess my fear on this matter is, if we're waiving a five hundred dollar per household, per customer, how's that gonna affect on the maintenance and repairs of the, of the aging system that we have, in case something does happen? And I know, from my experience, that a water or sewer leak can exceed a hundred thousand dollars, just in one shot.
Y- y- yes, and, and, Mr. Mayor, if I may, address-
Yeah.
-Commissioner Burke's question. Um, in this particular case, one of the things, because state law prohibits us from taking the money out of the Water and Sewer Fund, um, for a program like this, um, it's, it would be coming out of the fund balance in the general fund. Um, in terms of, in, in terms of, um, potential delinquencies, for folks who are truly impacted by this, and would end up being a, an uncollectible debt, or, or, um, or a default on their water bill, um, it, see, from a policy standpoint, if our backup plan is to have it pay, if, to have it paid out of this fund, out of general fund, so that that money goes to the Water and Sewer Fund, or our enterprise fund, at least that mu- that money is coming in there. Um, but, thank you, if we're, we're having, um, we've, we've got, um, um, some, some data, some data here from our, uh, that would also, would also go there, so you can, so we can also talk about the order of magnitude here. So, um-
Go ahead.
And this goes, and this goes back to Commissioner Mann's question. So, the finance director has, has quickly brought up, our March mon- our March monthly statement included, billed thirty-one thousand, two hundred dollars and fifty-one cents for water, forty-six thousand, eight hundred nineteen dollars and thirty-six cents for sewer, for a total monthly billing of seventy-eight thousand, nineteen dollars, eighty-seven cents. Um, the, and, and then the, it's, it on the, and the court, they, she also did a, a quarterly average, um, it's act, so over the quarter, it was actually a slightly lower number, fifty-four thousand, nine thirty-six, and presumably, that's because we were in the winter months, since obviously, we see, we, well, in the past, we would have seen higher monthly, higher monthlies in the summer, although this particular summer, we may see, we, we expect to see revenues down across the Water and Sewer, the Water and Sewer Fund.
Wow, that's expensive.
Well, this Commissioner Collins, um, the hundred thousand dollars is coming from, uh, the fund balance, from the general fund, but the money is being paid to the Water and Sewer. So, this is like, even though they're getting free water, but this is like, we giving Water and Sewer a hundred thousand dollar, uh, budget amendment, to give them money, but, so the, the money is really not going anywhere, it's coming right back to us.
Okay.
Alright, uh, anyone else like to comment? Well, I, I, I'd like to find some relief for the people that really need it. I don't know how we're gonna do it, to be fair, but that's, I guess it's board decision, so that's what it'll be, but, uh, we're talking a lot of money on Water and Sewer. On a month, and we, and we're not, this is, I think she gave you the figures for March, James?
Yes, sir, and then she had done a, a quarterly average over the, over the, over the, over the three-month period, which was slightly less than the March monthly. The March monthly, it's seventy-eight thousand, and the three-month rolling average, it's just under fifty-five thousand, but it's, it's still a, it's still a significant amount of money in, uh, in res- in response to the-
It is on a monthly basis, we're talking three months, isn't what you're talking?
It was on a, it was just, that was the monthly, the monthly average.
Yeah.
Yes.
But you're talking about relief for three months, or you, you haven't discussed that, have you?
It would, yeah, it would depend on the household, the, the, we, the, the, the proposed cap of five hundred dollars per household could vary for, like, for a typical family of four, that would have got them four or five months, for, you know, a family of two, or, or a single person, that would get them more relief, um, and, you know, so, so it's, it's, it's hard to know what each individual family might have, and we even, we even hear reports that some folks are maybe having some higher consumption on a residential basis, because, for example, you know, the kids are home from school, and, um, you know, the family is, many of the families are in, under the stay-at-home order, so some folks may have higher-than-usual bills, uh, during the current, during the current governor's order.
This is Richie, I have one last question, um, the Darryl County Water Bill, does that come out of the, the general fund account?
Um, the, the, um, ye- yes, Commissioner, the, the, um, the, the raw water we pay for from Darryl County comes out of the, out of the Water and Sewer Fund, not the general fund.
Oh, okay, the Water and Sewer Fund, okay.
Definitely account for that separately as an enterprise fund, um, in accordance with the, with the general statute, so we, we, it's, not only is it separated, um, but it, it also has, of course, it, it is, it is audited as well.
And the sewer costs also come out of the Water and Sewer Fund, correct? Right, the, um, the treatment, the treatment of the sewer system, that comes out of the Water and Sewer Fund, right?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, they, yeah, the Water and Sewer Fund would handle both the water and, uh, and the wa- and the wastewater.
Okay.
Thank you.
James, yeah, I know you've done some calculation on this, in your opinion, maybe you can't answer it, and I don't want to put you in a box, so if you just mull over it a little while, in your opinion, what could this cost us? Now, Darryl says we're transferring one fund to the other fund, so it balances out, and I don't see it that way, but, 'cause then you take, if you take away from the water fund, we're still, even though it's a separate entity, I guess, it's, it's still, let's figure on the water budget, water fund, how much money are we really talking? Overall, in your opinion?
Well, the, the Water and Sewer Fund, in effect, is made whole against the potential delinquencies or defaults, um, by, by the, by the residents who, who otherwise are seek, may seek relief. Um, interestingly enough, um, I know this was, this was a, a, a big topic with the board at its, at its last meeting, and if, unlike the, the, um, the Small Business Fund, which was a quick-hitting thing, right now, the town of Manio does, has suspended the disconnection of utilities, and if, if, if we want to gather some more, you know, some more, some more data, or ha- or go through a different what-if scenarios, this one is not something that has to be passed, meaning if you choose to table it-
Well, but, you know, the Manio business don't use near as much water, does it, as, as a residence? Because it, usually, they're required to have one bathroom in each, uh, business, that's required law, I think, and people, very seldom go in the bathroom, not, everybody don't wash their hands and use it for other purposes in businesses, as they do to the residents. So, am I right or wrong?
There's, there, interesting, you're, you're right that there's some, there's some, some big, uh, variability in the, in the, in the commercial, uh-
In the restaurant, in the restaurant part of it, sandwich shops, and things like that, but it's, you know, say the bookstore.
Mm-hmm, right.
I'm not picking that out, but let's just say that. How many people would use the bathroom in a given day, I wonder, not many.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, especially some of the small businesses, they do not have the-
Well, most of them don't let you use the restroom, they got signs up front, says, uh, "Not for public use."
Understood.
Just a thought.
This, this Commissioner Collins, uh, this, this is just for Manio residents, not businesses.
Okay, okay. You're right, I'm sorry.
It, it sounds like, uh, you know, more information, it, you hate to keep putting things off, but it, you know, being that we've suspended, um, uh, cutoffs, and they, does that include late fees as well?
Yes, yes, Commissioner, right now, right now, uh, late fees, interest penalties, and disconnections are suspended, um, and the, and the, that would, so, so for right now, uh, that, 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 that's buying some time for some of these, some of these folks, but, and, and, but the charges, the charges for the water do continue to accrue, because as, as, um, um, as, as an indirect reference to Commissioner Burke's comment earlier, we, we do buy ra- our raw water from the county as part of that, that, uh, that prior agreement, so the town's actually paying for every gallon coming in, um, so that's, that's, that, you know, that's, that's another, that's another factor to consider.
Yeah. I'm, I'm having a, a tough time personally, not sure, you know, I, I think, um, as with, you know, what we've been talking about for the past hour, it's, uh, um, the intent is all there, and we, and everyone's trying to figure out how we can take care of, uh, everyone as best we can with, um, everything going on. Um, I think it's just the impact, and is this the right way, um, to do it? That, um, I'm struggling with, and I, I, I take Darryl's point, you know, we're, we're shifting an allocation of funds, uh, is one way to look at it, um, but, you know, it's- it is coming from somewhere as well, so, um, we're really just pushing it around, um, so I, I don't, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm wondering if we table it until the, uh, um, you know, two weeks till next meeting, or three weeks, I guess, but, um, yeah, I'm just having, I'm, I'm, I'm bouncing back and forth on this one.
Alright, uh, anybody?
Uh, it's Eddie Mann, I have an, I have another comment, um, so, what, just trying to snowball ways to help, um, everybody, that would help residents, and everybody in town, even, even businesses, I know this is resident-specific, but, um, if there was a way to project, um, what we believe water revenues would be, and from May first to, say, September first, and come up with a number that would cover all water bills, which I'm guessing would be around a two hundred thousand dollars, if fifty-five is the average, um, but, something to affect everybody, 'cause it, everybody is hurting right now, not just businesses, but residents, um, everyone, everyone's affected in some way or another, and we need to figure out a way to help everybody, and not just, uh, not just two hundred households, but we, we've got about fifteen hundred people that live here that, that need help.
I, I think Eddie's got a good, good, I don't know if we're gonna get there, unless somebody come up with a motion, or James could help us, that we could help people in relief, or just, say, from May to, well, what'd you say, September?
September first, yeah.
Yeah, September first, and, and what do you think it would cost? 'Cause then we could, I, I mean, we could just say, we could, well, I don't know, we, this bill refers to residents, I don't know how it would include businesses.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, J-
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Um, we, what we can do is, given the, given the, um, this, um, these scenarios, what we can do is, between now and, you know, again, we have some, some time here to come up with a program, and I think having the, having the public hearing, the public comment, and the, and this additional board direction is helpful, where we can actually take a look at what are the scenarios with, with residents, what are the scenarios with businesses?
Alright, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And then we could come back to you, um, at the, at the, maybe, I, we've got a very full agenda on, on the, on May sixth, however, um, we, we could buy ourselves a little bit of time, since we're in that suspension of disconnections, and maybe the mid, mid-May-
Why, James, if we brought it up May the sixth, put it on the agenda, could we make, uh, if it were to pass, make it retroactive?
Oh, yeah, y- y- yes, sir, yeah, we, we've, we've got any number of ways to structure that, we'll, we'll, we'll find out how to structure it, retroactive, resident-
Well, how, how would the board feel about that, then, that we just tabled this, uh, five B until May the sixth, and let James' staff come up with some kind of recommendation, 'cause he's heard from just about all of us? How'd the board feel about that?
This is Commissioner Collins, I, 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 could I say, how mu- how much, how mu- how many gallons of water is a hundred thousand dollars, by, again, maybe?
I, that's, that's a good question, one I do not have in front of me, especially considering we, we have the combined water and sewer bills here, but we will, we will get that in, we'll get that information.
Yeah, we're gonna have the whole packet ahead of us, May the sixth.
We'll, we'll get, we'll add that, we'll add that to the list.
And to James's point, is, is this better served moving to the May workshop meeting, rather than May sixth?
Well, that'd be up to, what, that'd be up to the board.
What's the date on the, uh, the May workshop meeting?
That would be May, May twentieth, the, the, the official-
May twentieth.
The first meeting is on the sixth, and then we've got the twentieth.
That's, that's May the sixth, that's the last of the town.
Alright, can hear some, some other board members.
I think we should move it, um, to May sixth, this is Betty.
Okay. Anybody else?
May sixth is fine, Mrs. Eddie, um, just a question, uh, would this public hearing, would that cover, cover it, if a motion was made for the sixth, or would we have to do a second public hearing?
Yes, sir, I, I, Commissioner, Commissioner Mann, the, um, this, we, we are, we are satisfied in terms of any public hearing, in fact, um, the, our discussion of this today, um, was actually brought into two public hearings, 'cause the Small Business Emergency Fund, because it was under economic development, required a notice public hearing, um, the Resident Relief Fund technically didn't have a pu- need, need a public hearing in terms of that statute, but it was best, because they're both funds, they're both coming out of the general fund, we, we thought it was more transparent to have a hearing for both, so we have satisfied that requirement, or that protocol, and on May sixth, the board could put this under old business and take action as it deems appropriate then.
Why can't we, yeah, why can't we leave it like that, and, and no need for a public comment period, and just have, uh, put it under consideration on, uh, May the sixth, what I'm hearing so far?
Yes, sir.
Or follow discussion?
If we have some more of that information, um- If we have some more of that information, um, i- is it possible to make that, um, I guess, public before the May 6th meeting, just so if there is any, you know, and anything crazy changes, people have an opportunity to speak on regular public comment?
Um, yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll address, uh, Commissioner Borland's question. So, what we would, what we would like, what we could do in that point, in terms of the agenda, which I know the mayor proposes the agenda. But first, we could have the agen, the agenda package would include that information, that staff report on Friday, May 1st, in anticipation of the May 6th meeting. And then, the agenda itself, should the mayor, uh, should the mayor, uh, uh, allow us, would be to, uh, put public comment, public comment would be before this item, which would be listed under old business after public comment. So, you'd still hear public comment on this topic.
This is Commissioner Walker, since there's not gonna be a vote, can I ask to be brought back in? I, I'd like to be able to discuss.
We'll have, we'll have to have a vote letter back in, and I think we should. Isn't that right, James?
Um, um, actually, if I'm, if I may, as, as a, as a point of order, uh, the recusal, any discussion, any discussion on this topic would-
But now you're, now you're changing the, you're changing the whole topic now, from a resident must live in the town, and they must have a demonstrated impact from the COVID-19. Y'all are saying y'all are gonna give it to everyone, businesses and residents. And if that's the case, then I can be brought back in to discuss.
I think she's right, James, but I'm gonna have a good, a, a formal opinion from somebody else, I don't know, and I'm trying to do the right thing.
I, I think I've got a mechanism that will make this work. So, if, if the board is choosing to table, to table the, um, um, what was, what was in the staff report, so if a motion, a second, and a vote to table that comes forward, then vote to bring Commissioner Walker out of recusal, and have those, and those comments can certainly come, uh, come either now, or at the next agenda item, which is mayor and commissioner comments. And that'd be a great way to hear that, and make that voice, have a lot of that voice be heard, with, uh, if that's all right with you, Mr. Mayor, and, and-
Oh, I don't want to deprive anyone, I'm trying to be as fair as possible.
Yes, I think that's a great way for, for the commissioner's voice be heard, um, in, on this, on a gen, on the general related topic. Is, is that okay with you, Mr. Mayor, and you-
Yes, yes.
Okay, so i- if we, if we do that, if, if you could, if a, a motion could be made to, to table the, um, the Manio Resident Relief Fund, um, and, you know, motion, vote, and second on that, that gets us away from that, that item, and then, um, the, then the vote to bring Commissioner Walker out of being refused, I think-
Why can't we include it in, in one vote?
Would, uh, um, yet, Mr. Mayor, you could, I just thought it'd be cleaner for the, for the, for the record, to make sure-
Oh, I don't care about clean, I just want it to be fair and equitable and expeditious.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm making a motion to, uh, table the, uh, economic relief for residents, and to bring Commissioner Walker, um, back in.
Good, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, the motion's second, is to, uh, table, uh, item 5B till May 6th on the agenda for fi, uh, uh, more discussion, and to bring, uh, Commissioner Walker be allowed to be back, brought back into discussion. All in favor? I mean, any discussion, wait a minute, oh, any discussion, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I have it, okay, Christine, there you are. The motion carries.
Wonderful, wonderful, so, so, uh, now that that item has been tabled, we are on to item 6 on the agenda for information. This is mayor and commissioner's comments.
All right, anyone, start it off.
This is Commissioner Collins, uh, Dare Days, is that a go or another?
Uh, how about, uh, Darryl, you thought in discussion along with the fireworks too? Cause we got appropriations from the tourist bureau. Uh, that's good, Darryl.
But we don't have, uh, got fireworks on Dare Days, well, on Dare Days?
No, no.
Well, fireworks, we're just gonna have, how about July the 4th? Well, let's talk about Dare Days first.
Yeah.
What do y'all think about Dare Days?
I think it's too late for, this is Richie, I think it's too late for Dare Days, it's my opinion. It's, he, it, it's less than a, almost an half a what, away, and it usually takes a year to get ready for Dare Day.
I agree, Richie.
Yeah.
But-
I hate to say that, I hate to say that.
This is, uh, Eddie, I, I agree with Richie. I, I think we should still vote on a Manio Citizen of the Year this year, and, and, uh, get it to them, however we do that, but then I, I think, uh, Dare Days is probably too far, too close for planning and budgeting right now.
All right, anyone else?
Yeah, I agree, this is Chris, this is Christine, um, I don't think we need to take the staff away from, uh, you know, more pressing matters right now. Um, I mean, Dare Day is a great event, but it's not essential at this point. And, you know, I feel like, huh, maybe we can salvage the 4th of July, and, you know, or we can have a bigger celebration of some kind, wh, you know, when all this is over.
All right, anyone else?
Yeah, I mean-
I agree.
Go ahead, Betty.
I said I agree.
This is, uh, this is Jason, I, I think we all hate it, and, uh, you know, I mean, I hate to say, yeah, it's canceled, cause, you know, I mean, it, the, the thought of pushing it back was, um, more just because we're gonna have to do something to, uh, bring up spirits when we get past this thing, but, uh, um, it, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be called Dare Days or anything formally, you know, people are gonna wanna come out, so, um, yeah, I mean, as far as Dare Days as we know it, it's probably, ain't gonna happen.
All right, James, do we need a motion to, to vote formally to cancel Dare Days for 2020, or what?
Um, uh, no, sir, um, I, I know that the board had previously discussed, everybody about the potential for postponing it, but I can go ahead and announce the can, I know we've had a lot of cancellations recently from-
All right, let's cancel Dare Days until, uh, 2021. That's what the other boards on the beach, I mean, uh, with other things, uh, situations they had.
Yes, sir, we'll put that announcement out, uh, we'll put that announcement, announcement out within the week, and also put it on our website and other places, so people are aware, but we'll come back, we'll come back stronger in 2021.
All right, now fireworks, do we want to talk about the, talk about it later?
I- i- if, if you'd like, Mr. Mayor, we can defer that conversation to the May meeting, um-
Okay, that's good. Let's, let's table it till, um, uh, just defer it till, uh, the May 6th meeting.
Yes, sir.
All right, any further comments from anyone?
This is Richie, I have one comment. What is the, uh, timeline on the town website as of today? Or do we know?
Actually, we, ye, yes, sir, yes, sir, um, uh, yes, Commissioner Burke, we had, uh, we actually had to go through a web, a website update. Um, we, I, I will get, I will get a new, a new timeline out to the board. We, in working with our vendor, there were, there were a couple of structural issues on the backend of the site. Um, had a, we had our, our little cross-functional team actually reviewing it last week, and preparing new content. But I hesitate to give a date right now, because we need Granicus to give us a final on when they're gonna deliver, uh, the backend and the navigation stuff. So, I, if it's all right with you, I will communicate back to the board, uh, when we do department head reports next month, if that's okay.
Okay, I was just wondering, because I've been asked, and it's been going on for four years now, about the supposed website. With nothing to happen yet.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, we're, uh, I, I had understood that.
Let me, let me, James, James, will you be able to give us a firm timeline, May 6th?
Um, yes.
Okay, now, now, Richie, is that satisfactory?
Yes, yes, sir.
Firm?
Fine, perfect, perfect.
All right.
Thank, thank you, Bobby.
Uh, anybody else, anything?
Yes, um, this is Commissioner Walker, um, kinda speaking to that, to Richie's point, um, well, not really, but, um, do we know, how many people do we have still listening right now, James?
Yes, uh, Commissioner Walker, we are showing, uh, we're showing 10 attendees, um, on the, on the, on the call-in line. It was beyond, beyond, of course, the mayor and board of commissioners, so 10 are listed here now. Our peak was 15.
Okay, um, yeah, I wanna thank everybody for hanging in there. Uh, I know it's not the easiest way, you know, for us to conduct business, but it is what it is at this point. Um, and I would like to have, maybe with the, um, that website discussion, um, on the 6th, if, if Carl Woody could get us maybe, um, uh, a number of how many views, or how many hits we're getting on our meetings that are, um, online. I'm not sure, I know there's, uh, a YouTube access, um, and I'm assuming through the town's website, you can also access the meeting. Uh, but I'm just interested in how many people are tuning into those, uh, versus how many are, you know, attending the, what we were having in-person meetings. Um, after a year, you know, we've had this, uh, televised. Um, and also, if Gina is still on, uh, is on the line, I, she had mentioned masks and hand san, sanitizers, um, for Bay Tree. Um, uh, I just wondering, you know, if there's a need out there that's not being filled, to please let us know, um, or even let me know right now, if she, you know, if she's still there, but, um, you know, hopefully, because I know that there's people, there's people that don't come to the meetings, there's people that are not gonna contact the town, but we have people that are hurting, that need help, that need help, you know, now. Um, you know, it's hard doing this, these meetings over the phone, you're not seeing people. Um, but, you know, we, our town is fortunate, and we need to be able to help people, businesses and residents. Um, you know, we don't know how long this is gonna last. Like I said, I'm out of work, and I know this was just a part-time gig for me, but, you know, the longer this goes on, this is cutting into, you know, whether people can pay for groceries and other essentials, or pay their water bill. Um, you know, buy diapers, we, you know, we need to be cognizant of that. Um, you know, I know we want to help everybody, um, you know, but we do, if, you know, especially those that are, that can demonstrate a need, which is what the business relief plan and the resident relief plan would do. So, I just, you know, I'd just like to make that known, that, um, you know, the mechanism was there in place to help people, and right now, it's just been put off, so, um, you know, just wanna thank y'all for considering it at a later time.
All right.
I mean, this is, $600 that Mr. Backman speaks of, that's up to $600 for federal unemployment. That is for people who were full-time, um, that is not a given of $600 per person. So, we do not need to put, uh, you know, that out there, that people are gonna get $600 in addition to their unemployment. That is up to $600.
All right, thank you, Christine, anyone else?
This is Eddie Mann, I have-
Go ahead, Eddie.
I have a few things, um, s, I have a few things for manager. Um, I'd like to see some weekly updates from the county COVID Task Force, um, town-specific. So, if there could be some way for you to update, um, all the residents, maybe on the website, the Facebook page, but, um, some kind of weekly update to what's, what the state of the town is, uh, with the COVID Task Force that's going on throughout the county. Um, and then, um, another thing is, um, the town commons. I'd like to see a, a, a timeline for the town commons, a start date, maybe, uh, when we'll see some groundbreaking.
I think now, being that, uh, traffic is slow, would be a perfect time to start, start getting things done around town. Um, and a way to generate some revenue for people in the trades, we can get some, uh, trade work done around town, maybe contribute to the local economy like that. Um, another thing, um, I'd like, if the, if the board would like to, I'd like to, uh, see on a later date, uh, we visit the, uh, zoning ordinance about boat lifts in town. There's, um, it's specific for marinas, and I think there's about 150 slips that could benefit from, uh, removing the ordinance about boat lifts, and that would generate, um, some tax revenue to the town if we had that tax base of boat lifts added to boat slips. Um, and I think that's it, I hope that's it, I had a million things on my mind.
Okay, thank you, Eddie. I heard somebody else say something, what, Betty, was it you?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, I just wanted to, uh, echo what Christine was saying. We are very, very concerned about our businesses, our residents, everywhere, everywhere, everybody's hurting, and we're certainly concerned about it, um, about you. And we are hoping that the town can have some resources, maybe through the, um, Small Business Association at COA. I'd like to see us try to help our businesses get online, and be able to get the application, uh, process started and ended for our small businesses. I think that we need to help them that way, if we can, um, to the town staff, we should establish that. And also, I'm gonna add my two cents to the agenda for May, if we could have an update on the attorney as well. Hire another attorney where we are, where we're going, um, I think we need an update on that as well. Thanks, thank you, James. Your whole entire staff have put a lot of work in, and we appreciate it.
All right.
Much, thank you.
Is that it?
This is, uh, this is Jason, too, sorry.
Okay, guys.
Keep stretching this out, I got a couple of things, uh, as well. Um, and, and Eddie stole some of them, I'm gonna echo a little bit about that, but, uh, you know, the, the town commons is, uh, is something, and, um, if that's gonna be construction that's delayed till fall, or, or winter, whatever, then, um, you know, is that something that we, with minimal construction, we can make usable for whenever we do open back up? Um, you know, make, make it into a rough parking lot. Um, and like you said, construction's some of the only people that can work right now. So, if we can support, um, whoever would be doing that work, as, as minimal as it may be, then, then that just helps, uh, continue to support our, our own economy. Um, but as we do figure out how to best support, uh, you know, the whole, um, the whole town, and somebody mentioned, you know, the whole island, really, um, you know, I think, I think we do need to start looking forward into how we do open back up. Um, you know, both driving people in, as well as operationally, and, and James, I know you always seem to be a couple steps ahead of us when we bring things up like this, but, um, I just wanna make sure that we're figuring out this, what changes, or, or things we'll need to do to be able to open back up, but also, there's nothing that's gonna support the people in this town than driving, you know, what drives the economy, the, the tourism, when we do open back up. Um, and, and figuring out how best to do that through, uh, different advertising, uh, avenues. So, that's, uh, that's my two cents. Oh, and, and somebody brought up the, uh, the non-resident homeowners, and, um, I know that's a hot, hot topic sometimes, and, uh, you know, there's, there's two sides to that argument, and I just wanna echo that these are tough times for everybody, and I hope that we can all try to see each other's, um, point of views, and, and treat each other respectfully. Um, it's, it's tough in a lot of different ways for a lot of different folks, and the best we can do is, uh, treat each other with respect, and then try to help each other out. So, now I'm done.
Okay, anyone else? Well, I'd like to finish with saying, I'm just gonna totally repeat myself from the last meeting. This teleconference is awkward as hell. I'm a people person, I love to look at people, and watch, show eyes, and see how they're thinking, and a lot of things. So, we're dealing with the hand we've been dealt, and it's not a good one, it's a bad situation for all of us. And Jason brought up an excellent point, we should love everybody, and learn to control our tempers, and all be in the same boat which we're in, uh, I don't know when we're gonna get out, I couldn't even dare think about telling you. I will say this, I have tried to be as fair as possible to the board on discussions, and I ask again and again, and give everybody opportunities to speak, and, uh, be recognized, and try to understand each situation. So, I'm gonna leave it right there, and we're gonna ask for a motion to adjourn.
This is Eddie Mann, I'm making a motion to adjourn.
All right, second.
Hold on a second.
All right, all right, motion by Eddie, second, but I think it was Jason, that we, uh, adjourn until, uh, May 6th. Go ahead, what, who was gonna say something?
I said 6th, this is Richie.
Yeah, May 6th, okay. All right, uh, y'all be safe and be careful, and have a good one, if you can.
Thank you, Bobby.
Mean adjourn.